The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed-session agenda items. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed-session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed-session agenda items.
Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Good evening. My name is Cindy Water, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Loja Soriano. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Let me please give that announcement. Give me a second, please. I'll make the announcement in Spanish.
Oh, sorry.
Buenas tardes a todos. Vamos a tener interpretación en español. En un momento vamos a activar la función de la interpretación simultánea. Abajo en sus computadoras van a ver un símbolo de un mundo terráqueo o globo mundial. Háganle clic ahí, por favor, y elija el idioma español. Si están en un dispositivo móvil como un celular o una tableta, busquen tres puntitos en su pantalla, Zoom, que dice Language Interpretation or Interpretación de Idioma, y escoge el idioma español. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Trustee Water?
Present.
Trustee Riser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Gracia?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Mahrez?
Present.
Quorum present. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Chu, do you have a report on closed-session agenda items?
I do. Item D1, Student Discipline. With respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to Ed. Code 35146 and 489120, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, USC Section 1232G, Student Matters. A, Expulsion. The Board recommends the expulsion for student 06202024A.
Move to expel.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Trustee Gracia and a second from Trustee Riser, and we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Mahrez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And number two, the Board recommends the expulsion for student 06202024B.
Move to expel.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Trustee Gracia and a second from Trustee Riser. We need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Mahrez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Also, under Student Discipline, B, Readmitted Expulsions. The Board does not recommend for the readmission from expulsion for student 03212024A.
Move to deny readmission and extend the expulsion.
Second.
We have a motion from Trustee Gracia, a second from Trustee Riser. We need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Mahrez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And item D2A, Personnel. In closed session, the Board took action to approve the following staff recommendation effective the 2024-2025 school year. On a motion by Trustee Gracia and second by Trustee Riser, the Board voted 6-0 to appoint Maribel Soto to the position of Assistant Principal at Napa High School. The votes were Trustee Water, aye; Trustee Riser, aye; Trustee Chu, aye; Trustee Gracia, aye; Trustee Jankowicz, aye; and Trustee Gonzales Mahrez, aye. Trustee Hart was absent.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Board of Trustees, for that appointment. We want to welcome Ms. Maribel Soto to the NVUSD Leadership Team. And Ms. Soto, we'd like to present you with the opportunity, if you'd like to come to the podium and address the Board and the public tonight. And congratulations, Dr. Ainsworth. I'm sure you're so pleased. Oh, there's a little button right there.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maribel Soto. I am a proud Napa High alumna, class of 2009. I would like to thank the Board, Superintendent, and Napa High for the opportunity to be an Assistant Principal at Napa High. I'm excited to be back in Napa and serve in this capacity for all our students. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, and next we have the flag salute, and I would like Mary Ann Christopherson, her last meeting, to do the flag salute.
Let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and let's see. Announcement?
Yeah, where's your script?
Right there. This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting, agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Now for approval of agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Gracia and a second by Trustee Chu. All in favor?
Aye.
You know, I keep forgetting we don't have our student trustee here. I'm used to inserting him in there. Okay, approval of minutes. A, June 5, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, unanimous. And June 6, 2024.
Move to approve.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
(Inaudible)
What? It was a first by Trustee Gracia and a second by Trustee Chu. And, okay, recognition of visitors and employee organizations. We do have some. We have.
Note, this evening, we do not see online or in person any of our, the leaders of our employee organizations. President Chu.
And we have no student of the months, and now we have public comment on non-agenda items. Is there what?
There are no public comments. I received via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
All right. And is there anybody in our queue waiting?
There are no public comments.
Well, anyone in our audience?
No cards were turned in.
No cards were turned in? All righty. And now we're moving on to Board of Education reports.
Trustee Gonzales Mahrez?
Trustee Gonzales Mahrez.
I'm sorry, who was the question?
Board of, what have you done since we saw you?
No, I was just, we were just, President Water, yes. My update pretty much has to do from the last time we had our meeting that we had lots of graduations to attend to, and I'm just really grateful and appreciative of the tremendous amount of time, from communications to the staff of having to put together what I think was just fabulous, all around with everything. I know we don't especially make orders for hot weather, and we know we've taken that into consideration in many ways for next year, but other than that, I think we just really had, it's just a beautiful time to reflect and see, right in front of us, the thousands of kiddos that are going and getting their diploma after so much hard work and success in their academic year. I also, I know we have later on some notes to share about the City of Napa meeting that we had, but I'll report on that later. Thank you.
Great.
Trustee Riser and I met to update the Governance Handbook. We defined the expectations and responsibilities of trustees, and last week, we attended the graduation ceremonies. There was great joy in witnessing the pageantry of our students walking the stage, and if you were lucky enough to witness one of the ceremonies, you heard the speeches that beautifully represented our senior classes, smart, resilient, hopeful voices that are clearly poised to take on the world. Tuesday evening, we had a public meeting to review the poll results on the potential bond measure, and then we returned to closed session. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Gracia?
Yes. June 10, 11, and 12, I attended graduations of the various high schools in NVUSD. On the 13th, I attended the MCMS Board Meeting. On the 18th, I attended the Special Board Meeting for Annual Priority Setting. On the 20th, I attended the Special Meeting of CSBA to appoint a Region 14 Director who will represent the newly-created County Region, Region 14. And then I also just wanted to take a moment to hold up a report that was created by CSBA that demonstrates all of the many reports that school boards have to make each year. And as you can see, it's so long, it wouldn't fit on a regular piece of paper. They had to use legal-sized paper in order to get them all on two pages. So it's quite a ridiculous number of reports that are required, many of which are duplicative, and some of which don't even get used for anything. So just wanted to put that out there.
Trustee Gracia, on the screen, it looks blank, but there are dozens and dozens in reports, so I just wanted to add to your presentation there because it goes without saying how many small font reporting bullet points are there.
I think they learned from Mr. Pearson.
So I also attended a lot of graduations. It's always wonderful to see the products of the work that we're doing here and all the way through our teachers. Thank you for all the teachers that shepherd them through their 13 years of education through NVUSD. And I also heard from a lot of community members about what we could improve on next year, so I'm grateful that the district, and the community is also very grateful for the fact that the district is listening and will be making some changes in the future.
Trustee Riser?
Yes. On the 7th, I met with Trustee Jankowicz, as she has already reported, to come up with as best as we could a complete list of the responsibilities and duties of trustees to better inform the community and those interested in running. June 10, 11, and 12 was graduation season. I'd like to echo my fellow trustees and their thanks to the district for putting on such large-scale celebrations that are so joyful, and also to the educators that shepherd our kids through all the way to graduation. It was a particularly moving and meaningful graduation for me, Napa High, to be able to hand my younger daughter Maya her diploma. I'm immensely proud of her and her classmates, of course, but it is, I think, the highlight. Graduations are the highlight for me of being a trustee and certainly handing my own childhood diploma is a lifelong memory I'll cherish. I also attended the ACMS Promotion Ceremony on that Wednesday morning, and that was also really lovely, and the Special Board Meeting on Tuesday for the Annual Priority Setting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I went to many of the same events. I'd like to, without being too verbose, echo my, just the real pleasure it is to see our high school students graduate, but also see our students from the adult school graduate. You know, they too have some very powerful stories, and it's just, it's a happy time of year. It's a happy time of year. I love hearing the singers, you know, the kids getting together for the last time. The music's great, and mostly the weather was cooperative, and I just love it. It's a happy time of year. And I too attended a special meeting about the school bond, also the, also our goals for next year. And we did have, we did have an evaluation of our Superintendent, Dr. Masetti, and I believe you came out pretty well in it. And it's a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, President Water. I feel the same way, and I thank the Board for their support and for implementing such a rigorous performance evaluation process where you give me constructive feedback. I'm very grateful for that, so thank you.
You're welcome. All right, and do we have Board Representative Reports, Special Education Committee?
We have not met.
City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives?
We also have not met.
City of Napa Liaison Reps?
We just have the notes attached.
Okay, they are? Okay, good. And Town of Yountville?
We have not met.
Have not met. Okay. And Superintendent and Executive Staff?
Before we go to that, I want to just go back to item H2C, Trustee Jankowicz. I just need a quick report out from the trustees that are on that committee because we do not attach notes.
Yeah, we don't attach notes to that one, so I'll just.
You want to do it?
Yeah, I can start it off and if I miss something, please add to that. This is our regular scheduled meetings with the City of Napa. We had the City Manager, Steve Potter, also one of the council members, Vice Mayor, Bernie Navais, was there, and we received a very good presentation in regards to the City of Napa's work around their discussion about a sales tax and also got to chat a little bit more on the NVTA part of that, but mainly to talk about historically in the area about their study and research in regards to the City of Napa's need for a sales tax. And for us, it's really important as public entities to be talking and strategizing potentially or just having just good discussion around that, and it also gives us an opportunity to share with them where we are at that point, where we were at that point in regards to our process of looking into if we do a bond. So just, again, a really great opportunity to share what our needs are here locally and how can we continue to work together to address those needs collaboratively and in open discussion. So I just really appreciated their time and information to share with us. Our schools are, the majority of our schools are in the City of Napa, and so it's absolutely critical for us to be aware about what the City of Napa is working on and the decisions that may impact our families and our district, so.
And I would just add that I would encourage you to go to their website. They have a very specific and clarifying overview of what their needs are, the why. They did an excellent job of breaking it all down. They did a comparative analysis to other cities and what their sales tax rates are and how that, how the funding would be disseminated, and I thought they did an absolutely excellent job of breaking it down in really digestible bites to understand the need for the tax. I mean, from my personal perspective, obviously, but it was, I thought it was a great meeting, and I do encourage you, if you have a moment, to go online and look at the presentation because they've put it up. Thank you.
What is that that we can go through?
I'm sorry?
What is that address we can go through?
Let me look it up for you, and then I'll.
All right, and now we will move to Superintendent and Executive Staff. H2, H3.
Great, thank you, President Water. Good evening, NVUSD Board of Education and broader community. Tonight, I just want to quickly thank everyone, including our students, all of our teachers, support staff, site and district administrators, and families for working together collaboratively to successfully complete the 23-24 school year. Yay. The graduation ceremonies, as many of the trustees have mentioned, are always such a great reminder of why we do what we do. So congratulations to the Class of 2024, the eighth graders that are now promoting to high school, the fifth graders now promoting to the middle school, and then, of course, our kindergarten students who are on their way to the first grade. I want to wish everyone a very joyful summer break. I hope those that have the time off, because some individuals within our organization do work hard during the summer to ensure that our campuses are prepared for the 24-25 upcoming school year, but for those of you that have the time off, please enjoy the time with your family and friends, and be sure to make, be sure to restore your energy for the upcoming school year. I also would like to take a moment to congratulate our newly-selected 2024-2025 Student Board Member Trustee Riley Garden, who's from American Canyon High School, who will be joining us at our first board meeting in August, and our alternate Student Board Member Trustee Midoslava de Resa Sin Fuentes from Vintage High School. I want to thank Trustees Jankowicz and Chu, correct, who implemented the selection process. I know that it's a lot of work, and it's difficult to make the decision because usually the young people that apply for these roles are pretty extraordinary. All would be fantastic, but thank you to the trustees who engaged in the selection process, and congratulations again to both Riley and to Midoslava. I also just want to take a quick moment. I know this is our Director of Student Services, Mary Ann Christopherson's last board meeting of the school year, but of her long career here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. You know, I've only had the pleasure of working alongside her for six years of my career, but since the moment I got here back in 2018, Ms. Christopherson has just been an impressive leader, an ally, a supporter, a collaborator, and just really prioritizes students in the interest of Napa Valley Unified to ensure that we're continuously improving as we serve our students, our family, and staff. I want to personally thank her for all of her years of service. She's been a teacher in the district, an athletic director, assistant principal, a principal, and spent the last two years here at the district office as the Director of Student Services, and she just hit the ground running a couple years ago when she left Redwood after her longstanding, successful career leading Redwood Middle School. We're so grateful that you chose this position. It's one of the most challenging positions in our system, and it really takes a great degree of commitment to manage everything that comes within the student services arena, and we're so grateful that we benefited from your dedication, your talent, your knowledge, and your willingness to serve the families and students of this school district. So good luck to you, Mary Ann, and we wish you the best in retirement. There is no one else that deserves it like you do. You work so very hard. So can we give her a big round of applause? And I know she's one of those folks that goes to bed early, and she's an early riser, so she's going to be grateful she doesn't have to be at these late-night board meetings, right, Mary Ann? Absolutely. Okay, and then lastly, tonight, I will be presenting on NVUSD's new vision and strategic plan. That's later a presentation item on the agenda. I look forward to sharing about these two deliverables that are the product of our year-long, community-driven engagement process. So I again want to thank the Board for all of your support along the way this past year. It was a rigorous process, but I'm very, very pleased with the products we're bringing before you that'll set the direction in our immediate and long-term future here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. So with that, I'm going to turn to the Assistant Superintendents, and we're going to start off with Assistant Superintendent Ms. Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Masetti. On behalf of the Human Resources Department, I would just like to celebrate the end of the regular school year and the successful launch of the Extended School Year, otherwise known as Summer School, and thank all of the employees who have made a great, have made great things happen for our students district-wide all year long and then now for another few weeks. As we close out this year, I want to express my gratitude for all of our bargaining unit leaders and their negotiations teams. Through collaboration and a commitment to transparent, interest-based problem-solving, district management, and NVEA, CSCA, NAPS have all worked diligently to provide fair, sustainable compensation, and continuously improving work conditions. Some highlights include the completion of a CSCA successor contract, which is in front of the Board tonight, an 8% formula-generated increase for all employees, a 2% one-time off-schedule payment, multiple MOUs with all bargaining units addressing topics ranging from class size and caseload limits for NVEA and NAPS, and individual reclassifications for CSCA, to name just a few. Beyond the bargaining table, we are proud of the inclusion of our labor partners in key professional learning opportunities, such as arbinger training with over 100 employees, including union leaders, our Diversity Equity Inclusion Steering Committee, and increasing attendance at our two professional learning days for all employees. Finally, employees from all units lent their perspectives alongside students and community members during our year-long process to develop NVUSD's new vision and strategic plan. I'm so proud and grateful for the value our organization places on employee voices in solving problems efficiently and effectively and designing the direction for the future of our students' education. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. And next, we'll go to Dr. Monica Ready, who's still currently serving as our Director of Curriculum Instruction and MLL Services at Secondary, but she is our newly-appointed Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, who will officially start in that role on July 1st, but tonight, she's going to give the report for the Instructional Services Division.
Good evening, President Water, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, staff, students, and community. As was shared throughout earlier reports, the NVUSD community had the opportunity to celebrate students during numerous promotion and graduation ceremonies. Congratulations once again to the Class of 2024 and their families. Thank you to our student speakers for sharing your stories of perseverance, resilience, and fortitude. Equally impactful were the stories of programs and classes, as well as collective experiences in schools, that provide students a sense of belonging and spark their passion for their future after they walk the stage. The educational journey that culminates in promotions and graduations are truly a team effort, and these celebrations would not be possible without the unwavering support of our dedicated teams and community partners, including Communications, Technology, Maintenance and Operations, Student Services, and the Napa and American Canyon Police Departments. As we celebrate these achievements, we're reminded of the power of community and the importance of working together. I want to give one last congratulations to all of our students, families, staff, and partners for a successful school year. Instructional Services quickly transitioned this week from celebrating the close of one school year to launching summer programming. The Extended School Year, ESY, has successfully commenced, serving over 200 students from preschool to 12th grade. Notably, this year includes the addition of two preschool classrooms. Thank you to Micah Watanabe and the Special Education Staff for organizing and coordinating the summer learning. It would not be possible without the collaboration with our Transportation Department, which has been instrumental in supporting our students' transportation to various sites. Additionally, the Extended Learning Opportunities Program began this week, with most of the programming set to start next week. We are particularly excited to introduce a summer bridge program for 120 incoming kindergarten students who have had limited or no preschool experience. These students have been invited to participate in the newly redesigned First Step program, made possible by the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program funding. The First Step program taught by our dedicated NVUSD TK and kindergarten teachers offers play-based, developmentally-appropriate activities to help students transition into kindergarten successfully. This program also allows us to familiarize ourselves with the students, ensuring we can better meet their diverse needs. Special thanks to Audrey Dawkins, Debbie Baldwin, and Robin Thompson for their outstanding collaborative efforts in developing. collaborative efforts in developing and organizing this program. We also extend our gratitude to the Community Schools Teams, parent liaisons, and On the Move Family Resource Center staff for their outreach efforts, which significantly increased student registration for this vital learning opportunity. Lastly, middle and high school programs have launched in partnership with Ama High Boys and Girls Club, NCOE, and Napa Valley Education Foundation. We're enthusiastic about the real and relevant learning experiences these programs will provide to support our higher learners' continued learning for NVUSD throughout the summer, and we look forward to reporting out when we return in August. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Reddy. Great job on your first semi-official report. And next, we have, and last, we have Mr. Rob Mangwala, who oversees Business and Operational Services.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the board. Since tonight's agenda is very substantial, I'll keep my updates short tonight. The Business and Operations Department have started the work of integrating our departments. We recently had a very successful leadership retreat where we met as a team and planned for the next year. More to come on this critical work in the fall. Summer work and construction is underway at lots of sites. I did have the opportunity to go out to Brown's Valley yesterday. I wanted to climb up on the roof, but they wouldn't allow me to. I guess I don't have a hard hat. I'll have to get one of those. Anyways, so their roof is being replaced, they're installing a fence, and some work is being done on their TK classrooms. And so we're excited about this work and some of the other critical work that's occurring at our sites. This concludes my report.
All right, President Water, that concludes staff reports for this final board meeting of the year.
Well, the final board meeting, I can hardly believe it. Okay, well, now we're moving on to Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of item is requested by a board member.
I'd like to move to approve except for item I-4A-B, which I would like to pull separately.
Okay, except for item I-4?
A-B.
Okay. All right, I'd like to, I think I should ask for a public comment on this. Do we have a public, are there any public comments?
Yes, there is. Our first public comment is Justin Hall. Justin, go ahead.
I am Justin. I'm going to make a very quick, one second here. I'm going to say happy summer break. I hope you will enjoy the summer break. And I wanted to see if we can just set up a newsletter for all schools so I can get one on my email. So I think we can do something about that, describe or something. So thank you, and enjoy your summer break.
Thank you, Justin, and you enjoy the summer also. All right, so do we discuss it first?
No, we vote.
We vote first. Okay, so we need, so you've, okay, so we've got a motion by Trustee Gracia, and we've got a second by Trustee Riser, and so we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Trustee Gracia?
Yeah, item I-4A-B. I'm concerned about this item. I was reading in the newspaper, the Marin Local News, and now I'm quoting directly from that article. Lori Watson has liked tweets that use such rhetoric, such as "white blizzard of snowflakes", and under a tweet that showed a black family in a car being harassed by white people, she said, "I'm sorry, but I would have pushed the pedal to the metal." Watson also tweeted, "Black people, America hates you." So I don't feel comfortable supporting this item.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I believe that that article was dated 2020. Is that right? Trustee Gracia?
Yes, it was from 2020. That is correct.
Yeah, so I think the context there matters to me, and I also believe that that article stated that those were tweets from her personal account, not her professional account, and I think it's a slippery slope to get into monitoring that kind of level of personal expression, in particular when you are talking about a black American woman reacting to the racial tensions in our country that align with her lived experience. So I personally don't have a problem with her. And I would like to clarify that when it said, the quote that you cited about "America hates you," it was spelled with a K, "America" with a K, which to me is, really differentiates, and that refers to the resurgence of white nationalism and sort of racial tensions that in 2020, at that time, were running very, very high after the murder of George Floyd. So I think context matters, Trustee Gracia, and I don't see this as being problematic in any way to Dr. Watson's ability to continue to work with our district and assist us in facing the difficulties around racial tension in organic and authentic ways. I think our school district needs that, as do really all school districts in our country. And so I fully support Dr. Watson in continuing to bring her expertise, her intellectual property, her guidance, and again, her authentic lived experience to help us address these difficult issues in our district. So I'll be supporting that renewal of her contract.
Okay, anything else? Yeah.
So I actually want to thank Trustee Gracia for bringing up this point because I think the discussion we should be having is, how should we evaluate professionals that we bring in as our consultants? And I think during that time in 2020, I just joined the board, and I had mentioned on one of my public, my public comment, not public comment, my board reports that my son, my older son, had just, you know, saw all those TV, you know, news about what happened at the Capitol during the inauguration, and he was a little bit, you know, just concerned, like, what is going on with the world. And there were some students in his class, him included, who were very critical about our former president. And the teacher, I don't know what his political affiliation was, but he was able to put things in context and say, "We should really think about this critically. We need to go back. We should not put our assumptions in line with how we judge people." And it really, you know, hit me thinking, like, you know, here are these teachers educating our children, and they are able to set aside and just, you know, think about things at a different level in terms of how do we educate our kids to really think critically when things like this, polarizing things like this, happen? And I really appreciated that. And so that was the lens I kind of looked at when I thought about Dr. Watson. And I can say that I have been in the DI meetings with her, and I have not found any evidence of her contributing to any of her personal beliefs and bringing that to the discussions during our DI sessions. And so I feel like she's able to not bring that personal part into her professional life, and I feel like that is why I feel confident that I'm okay with saying yes. But I do appreciate that you bring that up because we really have to kind of rise above a lot of things when we talk about public education and how we support our staff and whatever level we do. And so I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that.
I also think that we can't be interpretive with somebody else's quotes because we don't know the context necessarily in which they were stated, and that the content can mean something very different for the person that's making that statement versus how we might read into that comment. And so, you know, I think a lot of us went through and we looked through, like, her three-phase system and went through her bio, and to me, her perspective in her professional work and, which may continue into her personal work, we're being very interpretive with how we might view her personal commentary on a social media platform, and I don't think that we can do that. I also don't think that we can speak for her and what it is like to be a black woman in 2020, trying to assess what was a very difficult circumstance. And so while I agree, I appreciate your viewpoint in trying to dissect kind of the origination of that comment, I do appreciate that, but I will also support.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, so everything that's been said so far by Trustee Riser, Chu, and Jankowicz, I completely agree with your points and clarification of the context around that. I also, when I read through that too, saw that the other school districts didn't end the contract with the individual, and I think because of your point, Trustee Chu, that I think every single one of us in the education system has to navigate the difficulties and quote-unquote messiness that exists within being a human being, which is a lot of the items that get put aside. And I think what I appreciate always about Dr. Watson and all of her DEI is putting it up there in front of you, right, and having tools to discuss that. And so I appreciate that our staff are receiving those tools, and we need more of that, clearly. We need more of that. I think each one of us can learn to hold ourselves accountable, and I'm not here to hold Dr. Watson accountable, what she does on her personal time. I'm here to hold her accountable, what she does with our school board-approved activities. And so far, I have not experienced any reason to believe that she does not conduct her work professionally and with the diversity, equity, and inclusion belonging. And more so, right? I think she'd be actually very welcome to have a sit-down with her because that sounds more like an item that might be more on her capacity as an individual outside of her life, and that may be more of a coffee meeting with her versus an item here, in my opinion. So I will also support this item.
All right, so I need a motion?
I will move to approve.
Second.
Okay, and we need a, first by Trustee Jankowicz, second by Trustee Chu, no, Riser, sorry. And we need a...
He just needed a vote.
All in favor?
I bet it's roll call, right?
It's roll call, isn't it?
Because it's consent.
Yeah, it's always a roll call.
Okay.
It's roll call vote.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Riser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Nay.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the civilized discussion. Okay, now we are moving on to J, Presentations and Discussion Items. One, General Services, A, NVUSD Strategic Vision and Plan Presentation. Do we have any public comments on that?
There are no public comments on this item. Oh, excuse me, there is...
We'll wait till after.
Okay.
We'll wait till after the presentation, sorry. I'm just so anxious not to forget public comments, sorry. All righty.
All right, well, thank you, trustees. This is a presentation that I will be delivering tonight, and so I'm going to go ahead and just do that from the dais here. You'll see the slides before you. This is just a reminder that in the summer, last summer of 2023, the Board of Education and I launched a community-wide collaborative process to develop a long-term, 15-year vision to guide the way our school system will serve children from transitional kindergarten to the 12th grade and beyond. I have control here. The result is Vision 2040: Reimagining Our Future Together. Our vision describes our community's long-term aspirations for our students, adults, and school system. Our vision includes a graduate portrait that envisions the outcomes for students, the community's aspirations for what graduates in NVUSD need to know, be, and be able to do in order to thrive in their lives and careers. An adult portrait that articulates the qualities that will help every adult working in our school district support each student's journey towards realizing that graduate portrait, and then a system portrait that describes the changes needed in the school district to create the conditions that will support the adults in attaining the adult portrait and students in realizing the graduate portrait. The system portrait provides the basis for our strategic plan that I'll speak to momentarily. In addition, the vision includes a statement of our core values, which are the enduring beliefs that guide our district's actions in realizing the vision and how we behave and treat each other. So here are the main elements of our vision in greater detail. We, as you can see with the graphic, you'll see that we aspire for our graduates to be, starting at the top, ready for adulthood and the real world, career-ready scholars, adaptive learners, confident and affirming self-champions, compassionate and relational humanitarians, equity-centered local and global ambassadors, and last but certainly not least, innovative, collaborative solution seekers. I'm not going to read through the adult portrait elements or the system portrait elements, but I'll allow everybody just a quick moment to scan those two products of our vision. Again, the adult portrait, supporting the graduates, and the system portrait, supporting our adults in the system, and of course, our graduates, too, manifesting these elements in their TK-through-12 journey. As I mentioned, the vision also includes supporting all of these portraits through seven core organizational values that we will lean into over the course of the next 15 years as we implement Vision 2040. Our core values include the following. First, as an organization, our aim is to center student agency and success, to cultivate a culture of kindness, joy, and celebration, manifest equity and access for all of our students, staff, and families, to be a future, to have a future-ready culture of innovation, to cultivate partnerships and collaboration, build relationships that are built through trust and belonging, and then, of course, this important value of unwavering commitment to excellence. So to support this vision, again, that's the three portraits and our seven core values, a plan was created. Transforming Our Future Together is our 2024-2029 Strategic Plan, and is the first in a series of multiple, multi-year plans outlining the important steps we will take towards realizing Vision 2040. The idea being that our vision will span over the course of the next 15 years. This is the first of a series, depending on if the board wants three- to five-year strategic plans. We've landed on this first cycle being a five-year strategic plan from 2024 to 2029, and there will be subsequent three- to five-year plans from 2029 to 2040. So tonight, I'm speaking to our first plan, again, titled Transforming Our Future Together. And the 2024-2029 Plan has 15 strategies that will be implemented over the next five years as we work to achieve that 15-year vision. So the strategic plan is here before you. The 15 strategies are housed within four themed areas in order to make sense and have a framework around our 15 strategies that will be focused on over the next five years. So let's start with the first theme, rigorous, real-world learning experience. rigorous real-world learning experiences for students. These are our three core sort of instructional strategies that are nested within the plan. First strategy being implement a common vertically-aligned TK through 12 instructional framework. The second strategy being establish systems for a career-aligned, real-world learning. It's all of our career readiness work. And then lastly, within this theme, we find build a comprehensive assessment framework and culture of student data use, making sure that our system is using data to drive instructional improvement. The second theme is called A Nurturing Place to Learn and Work. The four strategies are as follows. Cultivate a culture of belonging throughout NVUSD. Build and promote equitable access to health and wellness for students, staff, and families. Unify professional learning throughout our system for all segments of our workforce. And then develop a comprehensive approach to improving school and district safety. We can't be a nurturing place to learn and work if people don't feel safe. Our third theme within the 2024-2029 strategic plan is a collaborative approach to thoughtful implementation. So these are the five strategies we've categorized and put together in order to think about our implementation being solid and our implementation really having integrity and there being fidelity to our implementation. So how do we plan to do that? We plan to do that by socializing our vision and strategic plan with the NVUSD community and really the community here in the district at large, right? Internal and external stakeholders. In order to attain that integrity of implementation, we are going to optimize a project management culture and practice, which means we're really going to monitor the implementation of these 15 strategies and all of the leading and lagging indicators that staff have articulated for each of the strategies. We plan to establish a system-wide approach for family and community engagement. We are going to create a board engagement and communication strategy because in order for this plan to really take root in the community, we need to ensure that the board is fully vested and that the board is engaging with the community at large and communicating about the plan with the community at large. And then lastly, we're going to design and embed a system-wide innovation practice, a space where we are testing and prototyping ideas that we want to take to scale that align with our vision and our strategic objectives. The last category, the last theme of our, within our strategic plan, is called High Functioning Systems to Maximize Our Impact. And in order to maximize our impact, we need to focus on these three strategies that have been articulated by staff and the community. The first one is develop a process for smart technology planning and responsible use. The second is to focus in on our improvement and maintenance of the facilities. And then lastly, but important to all of us here at the dais, is to continue to deepen our governance work. So our community reimagined the future of the Napa Valley Unified School District for our students, staff, and families through our visioning process. With our strong, community-crafted vision in place, we are excited to enact our strategic plan to actually make this vision a reality. Join us, and that's an invitation to all of the community, to the school board, to staff. Join us in activating these 15 strategies. Through continued community collaboration and adherence to those seven core values, we are confident that we will be able to transform our future together. During the action segment of tonight's agenda and meeting, I am recommending that the board approve as two separate action items. First, Vision 2040: Reimagining Our Future Together. That's the long-term vision, the aspirational goals for the district. And then a separate action item tonight is our 24-29, Transforming Our Future Together strategic plan. I want to close with thanking the Board of Education and everyone who contributed to the work related to our 2019-2024 strategic plan. I have a soft spot for this plan. It was the first plan of my tenure. So we formally say goodbye, good night to it at this meeting. We accomplished so much challenging and exciting work over the past several years. Tonight, we formally sunset that plan and formally look ahead with our new vision and strategic plan so that we can build upon our strong foundation and reimagine and transform our short and long-term future here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. So thank you for all of your support. If you have any questions regarding the vision and/or the strategies in the 24- to 29 plan, I invite those questions now, but you may want to first ask for any public comment.
Now, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Justin, please go ahead.
Can anyone hear me? Okay. I did I did want to just shout out for super tennis. I need to do a great job, make this happen. And I was doing, I went to all the schools. I went, I went from preschool to high school and transitioned to a class. I think I will see more coming. Another thing is, I am in the Napa Kiwanis Club in Napa. We help build playground for kidney. And I can't wait for Dons Way because Dons Way is going to get new classroom and new playground. So Napa Kiwanis will be around. And I love to build playground for kids. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Justin. Any other public comments?
There is no other public comment.
Thank you. Board, any comments?
I just want to say that it was a really great process to have been a part of, just meeting all the different members of the community from all different walks of life, including lots and lots of students, especially as we kicked off the strategic planning phase. It was just amazing how much community input we received. And I think this is going to be wonderful for our school district. So thank you very much for the work.
Yeah.
I agree.
I just appreciate that we really looked outside of the box and took a different perspective to assessing what a strategic plan looks like. This wasn't kind of a mainstream approach. We really, well, not, the guiding coalition really took the time to analyze not only multitude of stakeholder groups, but the perspective of our students, the impact, condition, environment, you know, all of the different things that can influence the education of our students. And I think they said we collected 60,000, 70,000 pieces of individual
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand pieces of individual data. And what each piece of that data represents to me is somebody cared enough to have an opinion of what the education of a child should look like. And it's, it feels good to know that this community cares enough, not only our own educational community, but our community at large that was invited to participate, cared enough to take the time to express their opinion. And there was, there were a variety of opinions. And so I appreciate that the district and the administration recognized not only the need, but were willing to expand the approach and do the work and take the time to create something that I think will be visionary and will change the trajectory of NVUSD and the education of our students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just end by saying that those, I don't think we can really spend too much time highlighting how much those 70,000 entries mean because that's the driver as to where we should focus. And then mix that with the experts in the room and key stakeholders. You've, it's a strategic plan that will have its bumps, for sure, challenges. There's external factors that we cannot plan for. But nonetheless, it creates a really a reliable map in a way that knows that when you're talking to a stake, for me, when I'm talking to a stakeholder, it's like, well, you, you, you. And it's like, no, you mean us. We were the drivers of that input. We are part of that. When you say that, that's 70,000 input from community members, from your students, to staff, everyone. So it's really us, which is kind of nice as a board member to be like, I didn't sit there and approve this. And Dr. Masetti didn't sit in her, in her office alone, mapping this all out. And with the help of the assistant superintendents or directors, no. This was by a really well-one-year planning and developing to put it together. So it is far more stronger than I think any strategic plan could possibly be. And I do appreciate that not a lot of school boards or superintendents or staff would be willing to maybe look at the tremendous amount of work that it takes to do that. And I think that even shows more from our NVUSD team and staff and families, how much they care, how much they care that this is worth the conversation because it was so real and authentic and it resonated with people. So it makes you want to engage and be part of that. So it's going to be a lot of work. It's not going to be perfect. Nothing's perfect. And it's going to have adjustments. And so just really, really excited for you all because you're really working with some real content from the community to do something about that. And I know everybody in this room, we want to all make impact. We all want to move the needle. And what better way than to hear from our community and our different stakeholders from our students, staff, and community to tell us what they would like. And so really excited about that.
Thank you trustee Gonzalez Morris. Trustee Riser.
Yeah, the word that comes to mind is just the authentic nature of this process, the deep commitment to real engagement from our community, I think is going to set this apart. Just exactly what trustee Gonzalez Morris said, that this arose from a very broad swath of our community who were committed to the children of our school district and committed to being, to being both aspirational and practical. It's a hard, a hard line to walk. And I think that this vision and plan meets that in a really beautiful way. I really want to thank everyone from the community that was involved in the guiding coalition and all of the hard work that the staff has been engaged with in getting us through this year-long process. And I, this is going to be a living, a living and breathing plan. This is not going to be some sort of pie-in-the-sky treatise that ends up on a website and is dead to the rest of the organization. The other thing that I just wanted to call out and really appreciate about this plan is the intentionality of tying the aspiration to action and accountability. And the way that this plan already is being approached and integrated across the organization so that it's really touching every level of the organization and every department of the organization. And the transparency of the approach, I think also speaks to the integrity of the end product. And I'm incredibly proud, in particular, of the amplification of student voice. I think that that's a strength of our district that we continue to build on because they are the ones that we serve. And so centering their voice not only empowers them to make them, I mean, I just, I, it's nice to reflect on, and I would actually love to get some, some kind of debrief from the students involved, but I know just sort of informally, anecdotally, that the students that have been involved in the process, it changes them too. Like, they are giving to us, but we are also empowering and strengthening their voice and their sense of self and their sense of their own power. So just everything about that makes me happy and makes me smile. I'm very excited for, to watch this unfold. And I know that we may need to make adjustments and adjust course. And I think that the fact that, that the plan is built the way it is sets us up for that because it will be a living and breathing plan that we are constantly referring to. So congratulations, Dr. Masetti and team. And thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Trustee Gracia, thank you.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Most of the other trustees have already said what I was going to say. I would just suggest that a big highlight really was the idea that we had a lot of student involvement and input and really got to hear their voice. And throughout the process, they had opportunities to be leaders of this, of this creation. And it was very cool to hear from them and incorporate their feedback. So that was a neat aspect of what we've done. Thank you.
President Water, can I, before you close us out, can I just state a couple of things? So thank you so much trustees. We are so grateful for your support. I do want to just let you know from, I didn't mention this in the formal presentation, but for each of the 15 strategies, there is a strategy lead within our organization. Some of the strategies will be co-led. And so I'm excited tomorrow to communicate with the strategy leads, assuming board approval tonight. And each of the strategies has a lead who will be sort of in charge of operationalizing the work plans that are related to each of the respective strategies. And there's also an executive sponsor from the senior team who will also be supporting strategy leads in order to make sure that, you know, all the staff feels supported as they work towards implementation. And I also just want to take a moment to pause and commend the governance team, the school board, for also ensuring that we have, two of our 15 strategies are governance strategies. And I want to thank trustees Riser, Water, and trustee Gracia, who all played a role in developing the goals by year and the strategic actions and the leading and lagging indicators. Our partner, who I also want to thank, Prospect Studios, who did an extraordinary job of working with the district to facilitate this, said that this was the first time that a school district, that this, in the work that they've done repeatedly with school districts, that the school board made sure that they were also, again, holding themselves accountable to ongoing continuous improvement work around governance. So I want to commend you also for ensuring that the school board is also growing and stretching while we're asking the organization to grow and stretch. So thank you so much.
Thank you. After that, I have nothing more to add except I appreciate living, you know, a living, a breathing, breathing project. The word I would have used was organic. I like the fact that it bubbled up, it came, we really went the extra mile to get community input. Like all of my colleagues, I recognize that we're in the business of working with young people. And yet, you know, we're sort of divorced from them most of the time, sitting up here. And so it was, for me, it was the first, you know, the first day out there at the college with the, with middle schoolers and all the secondary students and seeing how, you know, they, they were a little, a little, well, bemused about what was going on. And then they got into it. They had wonderful ideas. And I think that's one of the strengths of this administration. And, you know, I'd like to thank Dr. Masetti for her leadership on this and everybody else who worked on it. I'm excited and I, and it's also another word I like, as I kept hearing, accountable. You know, this is not something that we're going to say, okay, that was all right, but we're going to move on. No, we're going to stick with this, you know? You're welcome. Whoops, do we have? I'm done with this one. Now we can move to business services and Spring 2024 STAR Assessments Results Presentation.
All right. I always have trouble with the clicker. Okay, got it. Good evening, President Water, trustees, and Dr. Masetti. This evening, members of the Instructional Services team and I will provide a summary of our will provide a summary of our STAR Assessments data for the spring of 2024 and share its role in the proposed strategic plan, which Dr. Masetti just presented about. As a reminder, the STAR Assessments serve as our universal screener in reading and math and are administered three times per year.
Thank you, Dr. Abud, and good evening once again to President Water, trustees and Superintendent Dr. Masetti. The presentation tonight highlights the importance of integrating data assessment and instruction. The data reflects the importance of two key strategies outlined in the proposed strategic plan. These strategies reflect our goals and theories of action in response to the data. First, we believe that if we have a TK-12 vertically-aligned instructional framework that includes structured, aligned lesson plans, literacy activities, and high-quality interactions through guided practice, we can see gains in both literacy and mathematics. Of equal importance is a focus on building a comprehensive assessment framework and culture student data use. In order to implement, monitor, and respond, we need a comprehensive assessment system that provides us the data to respond to student needs through continuous improvement structures and systems, including multi-tiered systems of support, otherwise known as MTSS, and professional learning communities. I want to thank the work of the Data and Assessment Team over the past three years in starting us with a screener that you see tonight, that students take three times throughout the year. And we look forward to working with Data and Assessment. I shall hear later on in the presentation about how we will build a more robust assessment system to help move these theories of action into a responsive plan over the next year. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Abud to present the data.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Reddy. All right. So it has been a while since we've presented about the STAR data. So I'd like to provide the board and community with a few reminders before we dive into the results. This is a summary of the grade levels which take the assessments. Students in grades three through 12 take the STAR reading test. Students in kindergarten through second grade take the STAR early literacy test until their reading abilities develop enough that they can be reliably assessed with STAR reading. And typically, this transition happens in second grade. Students in grades one through 12 take the STAR math test. Here are some of the key data points that we've looked at in the past and that we will revisit again this evening. First, the scaled score. Students who take the STAR assessments are given a scaled score based on the number of questions answered correctly and the difficulty of those questions. And it allows us to compare student progress over time and across grade levels. Next, we have the percentile rank. Students are given a percentile rank indicating the percentage of other students nationally who obtain scores equal to or lower than that of a particular student. So for example, a student in the 35th percentile in STAR reading performed better than 35% of students nationally in the same grade level as that student who took the assessment at that same time of year. Renaissance then categorizes students based on their percentile rank. Students who score better than 40% of students nationally in their grade level at that same time of year are considered at or above benchmark. There are four total categories ranging from at or above benchmark all the way to those in need of urgent intervention who are scoring below the 10th percentile rank. It is important to remember also that students are expected to earn a higher and higher scaled score as they progress through their learning. For example, an eighth grader who took the STAR math test in the fall needs a scaled score of 1078 to be at or above benchmark. And that minimum scaled score increases over time. And by the time that eighth grader takes the test in the spring, they will need a scaled score of 1094. And now the results. And so this evening, we'll actually be presenting the results from all three screening windows from the school year all at once. On this slide, you'll see the percentage of students who scored at or above benchmark for the fall, winter, and spring for literacy and math. For our overall student population, we see a steady increase from fall to winter to spring with a net increase for literacy of 6.3% from the fall to the spring and a net increase for math of 5.1%. And although our student groups continue to perform at a lower rate than the overall student population, all groups over the course of the year have been showing some form of steady improvement from the fall to the spring. I'd like to also point out that when we looked at these same data points in the spring of 2023 for the three screening windows from last year, there were several cases where we saw growth from fall to winter, followed by stagnation or even a decrease from the winter to the spring. And we're not seeing that strong pattern again this year. The next set of slides will break down the student performance by grade level across the three screening windows. This slide shows the percentage of our kindergarten students who scored at or above benchmark on the STAR early literacy test. And there has been steady increases in this area from the beginning of the year until now. As you may recall from previous presentations, second graders take the STAR early literacy test or STAR reading, depending on their skill level. Over the course of the year, we also saw a number of first graders shifting from one test to the other. And so because of the two different tests at these grade levels, it can sometimes be difficult to compare growth over time. And so instead, I share with you the number of students taking each test for each screening window for both of those two grade levels. At the beginning of the year, only 3.2% of first graders took the STAR reading test. And by the spring, it was 27.7%. For second grade, it was just over half of our second graders who took STAR reading. And that number increased to 82.5% by the spring. The overall increase in the number of students taking STAR reading test over time is indicative of students' literacy development during the early years. We now switch to STAR reading. Here are the proficiency rates for our elementary students. We see increases from fall to winter to spring, especially at the third grade level. And here we have the middle school STAR reading data. The scores for each grade level show minimal changes from one screening window to the next with some slight increases or decreases over time. This pattern is consistent with what we've seen at the middle school level in previous years. At the high school level, we see minimal changes across the screening windows in ninth, 11th, and 12th grade. 10th grade shows incremental changes across the screening windows. And these small changes at the high school level are also largely consistent with what we've seen in the past. When we switch to STAR math, we generally see increases over time at the elementary grade levels. This is a little bit less so with third grade, where the percentage of students at or above benchmark stays largely consistent from winter to spring, but otherwise steady increases over time. At the middle school level, sixth grade shows small increases over time. Seventh and eighth graders show slight increases from fall to winter, followed by slight decreases from winter to spring. And at the high school level, ninth and 12th grade showed increases over time, while 10th and 11th stayed largely consistent. Now, this slide shows cohort data from the spring of 2023 to the spring of 2024. The percentages indicate the number of students who scored at or above benchmark from last spring compared to this spring. And these represent the same group of students across the two school years. And students are included in these percentages only if they took the assessment in both years. For STAR reading, there was some kind of increase for all grade levels except for sixth grade, which experienced a 9.7% drop. 12th grade remained the same in STAR reading. And for STAR math, we see increases in the majority of grade levels, especially third, fourth, and ninth grade, which had increases of more than 5%. Sixth, eighth, and 11th grade did show decreases. We are especially aware that sixth grade had a sharp decrease in both reading and math. And I'll continue to work with the Instructional Services team to look at the data and try to better understand what happened at that grade level. And so now we'll switch to growth data. I'd like to take a moment to talk about student growth from fall to the spring. Another data point that's provided by Renaissance is the Student Growth Percentile, or SGP. I've shared this data before, but as a reminder, this indicates the percentage of students nationally at the same grade level and with a similar score history as a particular student who grew less than that student over a defined period of time. So for example, a student with an SGP of 60 from fall to spring grew more than 60% of students nationally who had a similar score as that student in the fall. Students with an SGP between 35 and 65 are making typical growth, while those with an SGP below 35 are making low growth and those with an SGP above 65 are making high growth. Overall, just under two-thirds of our students made typical or high growth in both literacy and math when compared to their peers across the nation, which is similar to what we've seen in prior screening windows. Typically, the percentage of students making typical or high growth is between 60 and 65%. And I also want to emphasize that growth is not the same as proficiency. Students who are making typical growth may or may not be considered at or above benchmark. When we look at growth by student group, we see the percentage of students making typical or high growth is usually in the 60s for most student groups and tests. The exceptions are our English learners or our multilingual learners and students with IEPs, where the percentage is in the 50s when it comes to math. And here we look at the percentage of students making typical or high growth for each test broken down by their starting performance level in the fall. The number is consistently in the 60s for all performance levels, indicating that student growth is typically consistent regardless of the student's starting point. And as I've done in the past, I'd like to remind the board and community that just because a student is considered at or above benchmark based on national norms or that there's cohort growth over time, like we saw earlier, that this does not necessarily mean the student is proficient based on state standards or that those results would translate into the CASP results, which we hope to have for you this fall. This chart shows the percentage of students who are considered at standard met or exceeded based on the state benchmark and the state standards, which is highly predictive of the CASP performance. These grade levels are the same ones which take the English and math CASP tests. And because of the strong alignment that we've seen between the STAR state benchmark and CASP, we are expecting our CASP results from this last spring that we just finished to be very similar to these percentages. And we look forward to sharing the official CASP results with the board later this fall. And I will now pass it to my colleagues in Instructional Services to share more about how the results from this assessment support the proposed strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Abud. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present. We'd like to highlight two strategies from the strategic plan that we're confident will support improvements in student learning in response to the data. So the first is Strategies Three, which I will speak to. And that is to develop and implement a common vertically-aligned TK-12 instructional framework, as Dr. Reddy referenced earlier. So an instructional framework is defined as the systems and expectations that guide curriculum, instruction, assessment, and the development of a supportive learning environment for students. So what that means is that it provides clarity, if it's well-designed, for teachers, students, parents, and really all educational partners about what we are teaching, how we are teaching it, and how we are assessing student progress. So the outcome that we are seeking in NVUSD through our implementation of this strategy is that all NVUSD students will have equitable access to rigorous, high-quality instruction that promotes literacy across the content areas, is based in a common vertically-aligned TK-12 instructional framework, and supports them to achieve the graduate portrait. So there are three elements of this strategy that I will speak to. They're listed here for you. And these are strategies that we will know will be important, again, in response to the data that you've seen this evening. So the first is ensuring that students have access to lessons that include a gradual release of responsibility or what we call the I do, you do, we do approach, where students are provided with modeling, clear instruction, and given opportunities to work collaboratively with support from their teacher, and then ultimately to work independently and be successful. Second, we will continue to strengthen our focus on literacy, giving students the opportunity to read, discuss, and write in response to a wide variety of complex texts across the content areas. And finally, we will increase the use of instructional strategies that support high-quality interactions, which is the opportunity for students to engage in structured, meaningful academic discourse that builds language. This is especially important for our multilingual learners, but really, this supports all of our students who are learning academic language. Dr. Abud?
So one of the strategies in the strategic plan that I would be heavily involved in is Strategy Number Five, a comprehensive assessment framework and culture of student data use. The STAR Assessments are what is called a universal screener, which is a universal screener, which is given to all students and designed to identify which students are at benchmark and which ones need additional support. But it does not necessarily provide strong diagnostic data about what it is specifically that students need to spend a little bit more time learning. So as part of the strategic plan, the Instructional Services team and I would work together to build out a larger and more comprehensive assessment system, which goes beyond a universal screener and provides more specific formative data that can be used at the classroom level. Much of this work has already been started by the Instructional Services team, and I look forward to continuing to support moving that work forward. The goal is to build out a strong data culture with more systemic use of data across the organization, especially formative assessment data by classroom teachers and professional learning communities to better inform their instructional practices.
Lastly, we need to build and strengthen academic interventions. We are seeing the positive impacts of early targeted interventions through our focus on letters training. And it is important that we continue to look at how we can do that at the secondary level in middle school and high school and intervene with the Data and Assessment team and the data that they have to provide and see where it is that our students have gaps and provide the responsive approach alongside the Tier One approach that was described earlier by Director Manning. Continuous improvement requires more than looking at data. It requires responding to the data. So in 2425, we will launch quarterly data dives where staff will review big-picture data and identify focused students to monitor and respond to throughout the year. These same strategies apply to professional learning communities as we engage in bimonthly learning communities analyzing our impact on all students with a targeted reflection on the focused students that our staff identified. As staff monitor progress, we will continue to engage in and strengthen our multi-tiered system of support and elevate our focus on Tier One and Tier Two academic interventions. Lastly, we will support a culture of learning and leading through the demonstration of learning. Principals and staff will have the opportunity to share their theories of action, data, and response throughout the year, as well as engage in lesson studies and classroom learning walks to support continuous improvement of Tier One instructional practice. Many of these exist in pockets across our organization, and we've learned from these small pilots. And so we look forward to taking some of these strategies to scale throughout our organization. We believe that bringing focus to structured, aligned lesson plans, literacy activities, and high-quality interactions through guided practice, as well as developing a data-driven culture, will result and improve results for students in both literacy and math TK-12. That way, we'll... Thank you. And we'll take any questions.
Thank you. First, I'd like to ask if there are any public comments about this presentation?
There are no public comments on this item.
Great, thank you. Trustee Gracia?
Sure, thank you. So I wanted to highlight the slide number eight that's showing that we are making growth in the system was a really encouraging sign. Slide eight showed both math and English were moving in the positive direction. So that was exciting. I was pleased to see that. And it indicates to me that we're making directional improvement across the system. So I just wanted to take a moment and highlight that little blue box there that looks pretty exciting. I did have a question and then some further comments. But my question is, I couldn't help but notice on the 17th slide that shows the cohort information that in the sixth-grade cohort, the data in both math and reading showed a pretty steep decline. And it was really the only one that we had. And so I was just curious if there was an explanation or theory as to why there is such a sixth-grade debt?
Yes, I think we share the same concern. There's a continued need to focus on the transition from elementary to middle school. We have for quite some time. And although we see growth within sixth grade, we're seeing that decline as they transition still. So one adjustment we're making is to look into the earlier grades to examine if students are prepared for the rigor of reading and writing and speaking across the contents as they transition into those core content areas. It will be the work of the ISS team as well as gathering the data to really dive into. We have a couple theories of action. One is that really examining if students are getting the background knowledge in academic vocabulary to then engage in science and history, social science. And Director Manning has already started to approach that work with the elementary team over the last meeting with principals. And then also examine the impact of the Common Core State Standards. There's been a heavy focus on conceptual understanding of mathematics. And so we have some questions. And we'd like to look into examining their procedural understanding of mathematics as they transition into middle school. And we look forward to reporting back out on what we've learned and our approach in response to trying to get to some of those root causes as students transition.
So I wanted to just finish up by highlighting that this has been probably one of the most positive demonstrations of growth that we have received since we implemented STAR testing, particularly in the areas of reading and writing. I am greatly encouraged by the growth we have begun to see and am hopeful that we can continue to see significant growth, particularly in reading over the course of the coming year as we continue our focus on reading and writing across the district. I eagerly look forward to seeing our scores at the end of next year.
Thank you, trustee Gracia, and trustee Jankowicz.
I also want to reiterate the congratulations. I remember at the last STAR presentation, Dr. Abud said... I remember at the last STAR presentation, Dr. Abud said, or during one of the meetings, he said, "I've looked at some of the data. I feel like the next one, we're going to have some really good news to report." So thank you for that premonition. The goal in all of this was always to get achievement percentage gains. And I agree, it's really nice to see those percentage gains. But what is also really nice is to see that we've really evaluated the process. The data is the data, and we have to make whatever response is appropriate. The Eighth Slide, I agree, showing our percentage increases was my favorite slide. And then the question we always ask is, how do we continue to increase those patterns of achievement? And Matt's last two slides was the answer to that question, and the strategic plan is the answer to that question. When we talk about what we're going to do, that's what's so important about the strategic plan work, is we have to make sure that, as you said, it is in response to. And Dr. Reddy, you also reiterated how important it is that we can have the data, we can analyze the data. But what we do with it, and whatever our response is, is what makes the magic happen for students. So I appreciate the really clear thought process on the implementation, the importance and authenticity of the data, the need to collect the data consistently and make sure that we're working with it comprehensively. And I want to appreciate that the "how", we've defined the "what" for a million years, but it was great that this presentation, in conjunction with the strategic plan, defines the "how". So, well done. Thank you.
Trustee Reiser?
Yes, I concur with my fellow trustees that this is really great news and encouraging to hear. I've been saying from the mic for a lot of these STAR presentations, you do not turn a ship on a dime. And I think what we're seeing now is the beginning of... We've been turning the wheel in the form of adopting curriculum and strengthening our implementation process so that that implementation of instruction is consistent across sites. The work of the team that created the MTSS platform, Director Knox is not here, but Dr. Abud, that process and structure that has been put into place, we are now beginning to, I think, reap the rewards of all of that. The implementation of the STAR as a screener, it takes time for the students to get used to that process. It takes time for the teachers to get invested into that mechanism of measurement. And it takes time for it to reflect the decisions and the programmatic changes that we've made. I can't help but wonder in the secondary about, like with the literacy, we've just adopted a high school ELA curriculum a few meetings ago. So we know that that will have an impact because there will ostensibly be consistent implementation of that rigorous curriculum. I know we learned through that adoption process that perhaps the literacy implementation of curriculum at middle school is not consistent. And that may be because the teachers are finding the current curriculum that we have lacking. Or, I'm sure there are myriad reasons why there are inconsistencies and some fragmentation there. And so along with the other things that we've talked about, about the way secondary students approach assessments and their investment, or perhaps lack of investment in performing on them, may impact the data. But I really also believe that we will continue to see the improvement, that the turning of the wheel of the ship is going to show up in that secondary data. Maybe not in the fall quarter data. It is still a very large move that we're making system-wide. So I want to thank you as a team, and Dr. Andrew Jennings, who's not here to bask in the glory of this wonderful good news report. But it's reflective of an enormous dedication and very strategic thinking on the part of the Instructional Services Division. So I just look forward. I want to thank you for sort of anticipating and handing us that these are our next steps. This is what we know we need to work on. The strengthening and the focus of the interventions of the Tier Two, as well as this continued focus on refining our Tier One whole-class instruction so that it is rigorous. All of the things that you've mentioned are all the exact right strategic next steps, in my view. And I just want to congratulate you on all of the green in our charts and the good news that we have to celebrate. And I also want to express my gratitude to all of the teachers and instructional staff support that are the ones where the rubber hits the road, making these improvements a reality for our students. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Reiser, and Trustee Chu?
So thank you very much. I love data, and this is great data that we're moving in the right direction. And I am also concerned about the sixth-grade cohort because that's my younger son's cohort as well. So I'm glad there is a plan that you guys are working on going forward. I also want to highlight the student growth data. And I really enjoy looking at the fact that, when we look at that table where we broke down all students, English learners, re-designated students with IEPs and free and reduced lunch, that there seems to be a very equal amount of, the same proportion of kids in all of those categories, which to me is saying that we are giving very similar support in wherever they're at, right? To really move them up in that. So I think that is very indicative of our efforts in trying to really push those groups that really need a little extra help. I'm pretty sure that you guys are going to work on maybe hoping that those rates will go up even further than what they are. But I'm just really happy to see that none of those groups are being left behind in the efforts that you guys are working on. So thank you very much for all this hard work.
Thank you. Trustee Chu, Trustee Gonzalez-Morris?
I think it's all been said. I just figured the superpower with the team here is glasses? Eyeglasses? Is that what it is? Okay, we missed that key ingredient last time. Jaw all done, and just let's keep going. And I think we want this trajectory to keep going and with the strategic plan and all that. I mean, more to that, but there's always going to be bumps. And then again, this test will work on some of the kids taking it maybe seriously. That's the other part we forget, that some of the kiddos are like, eh. I'm not sure until how much of that is calculated in here, but just thank you.
Do you have anything?
No, everything's been said. I do just want to, I think you've all said it, but I think it's pretty incredible that the leadership in Instructional Services alongside Dr. Abud and Data and Assessment Services are instantly putting the strategies and the objectives of the Just Develop strategic plan to work. And through this presentation, demonstrating the high degree of confidence that they have in the strategies and objectives that have been articulated as the most responsive way to improve student achievement. So that's pretty impressive that you could do that so quickly. So I think it speaks to our team ready, based on the year-long process, to breathe life into the strategic plan and really look to it as our tool for continuous improvement and impacting the student achievement levels of our students. So thank you.
Yes, and I just want to say thank you. I wish Dr. Andrew Jennings were here tonight. And maybe you can tell her that we're all pleased with the results. Things are moving in the right direction, and I am not entirely surprised because I was visiting your old school, Mr. Manning, Phillips School, where they were having their third trimester shout-out where they were discussing results. And there was a clear improvement across the year. And I know how hard those teachers have been working. So thank you to all of our teachers and everyone who helped them. And thanks, students, for taking it seriously.
Next item.
Okay. And the next item, Three Instructional Services. A attendance 2023-24 presentation.
Thank you for this opportunity. President Waters?
It's here. I'm not ready yet. Board of Trustees, Dr. Mucetti and Napa Community, Drew and I are excited to share the results of our chronic absenteeism data. But before we do that, I would really like to recognize some people that are essential in this work. I don't think sometimes we do enough to recognize the people behind the scenes that are doing the hard work. So I would like to just give a shout-out to all of our attendance specialists at every school site. They have worked diligently to work on improving this data. I'd also like to give a shout-out to our Senior Administrative Assistant, Lori Oya. She has been supporting, well, she's been supporting Drew, and she's also been supporting every single school site when they have questions, or they've got something that comes to them, like a letter that they're not sure to send, she gives them direction. I'd also like to point out that the site's social workers are incredibly useful and have done excellent work, especially with some of our McKinney-Vento families and our foster youth. And also, I'd like to highlight Mr. Drew Heron, who really has put this plan together. So he's going to share the majority of this presentation because it's been his passion project this year. And I think you will be pleased to see the results. So let's begin with our first slide. Okay, so what is chronic absenteeism? So it's when a student misses more than 10% of the school year, which equates to 18 absences. So we count into that number excused absences and unexcused. They are both tabulated in that data. The California School Dashboard, CDE Dashboard, counts students TK through eighth. And some of you may wonder, why is high school not reported? Well, the high school results, that data is reported in the graduation rates. So if you go to the dashboard, you'll see that. And then there is no more COVID forgiveness this school year. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Drew.
All right. Well, good evening, and thank you, Dr. Mucetti and trustees, for giving me an opportunity to come and talk about our data this year. Looking, you know, this last year, we didn't have a whole lot of growth or improvement. We had a little improvement, which is good. We always want to have some kind of improvement. But I was hoping for more, and we didn't quite get there. But this year, we really kind of looked at changing some things and kind of refining our practice, and I think it paid off. So when we look at our current chronic absenteeism rate as of June 7th, was 18%. So compared to last year at that point, we were 26.1%, which is an 8% drop. Now, this is also using a data tool. So our data tool that we use doesn't always quite match up with what the dashboard reports or what we can find on请求 It's off by about 2%, 2.5% typically. But either way, it still looks, we really had a lot of improvement. I did run our data just since school's out. We have to submit our presentation a week ahead of time. So what it came out to be was 19.1%. So still a 7% decrease from this time last year, which is great. So let's start looking at our schools and how they did. So these are all our elementary schools. The first column is this year, second column is last year. And just look at all those negative numbers. Every school has a negative number. Lots of schools have double digits in improvement. We're going to highlight two of these schools, Napa Junction. They had the most growth at 19.5%. And Pueblo Vista, who is at their pre-pandemic number, 7.3%. And still a lot of double-digit growth. Our middle schools, same thing, all negative numbers. Redwood and Shear had double-digit drops. And just to highlight one other thing before we move on to that Mary Ann said, our attendance specialists at the schools work really hard trying to keep in touch and keep everybody in tune to what's going on and how they can be supported. So this year, they were a little overwhelmed in the beginning, but we kind of figured out some things as we moved through it, trying to refine our process. And then our high school numbers all have negative numbers as well. So every school in our district had negative decline in chronic absenteeism. Okay. So looking at our dashboard numbers over the last three years, or three years ago, compared, and these are what our data tool gave us. So we know it might be a little bit higher than that. So the TK through eight, we're at 17.6%. And when we look at TK through 12, we know now it's at 19.1%. But still, that's quite a bit of growth. And just kind of listening to the presentation before us, and Trustee Gracia mentioned, it's some of our best growth that we've seen in that. And there's, to me, no question that it's related to that we have more kids in classes. And they're not going to learn unless we get them there. So I'm very happy to see that there's a trickle-down effect to the work that we're doing to support our students and their learning. So to highlight a couple of our schools, Pueblo Vista. So as I mentioned, they are at their pre-pandemic number. Actually, they're better than their pre-pandemic number. They were 7.6%. So in 2018-19, which was the last time we had, before the pandemic, had those numbers. And really, working with Helen Roca, the principal, she has a great team with Kathleen Burrows and Sonia Ayala in their front office. And what they were really focused on was temporary home study this school year. And Kathleen would run a report every day, see students who were absent three days or more. And if they hadn't called, she would call. And then when she couldn't call, Sonia would call. So there was really this personal outreach, talking to families, and they were offering temporary home study. So that really helped with recouping ADA. And that really helped with their number, not only with the ADA, but also just that, I think, to me, it's that personal touch. We send lots of messages out through Parent Square. We send lots of messages out with our attendance letter process that I'll talk about in a moment. But there's a personal touch there, I think, they offer at their school that really made an impact. Looking at Napa Junction here, towards the end of last year, Norrie Montgomery, their principal, was asking me, "I'm really concerned about this. What can we do?" And so we started looking at where a lot of their students lived that were absent, that were chronically absent. We looked at, how could we change what you're doing around messaging? So we actually went out to this one particular area. They have a community center. And we held two meetings at the community center, invited families. She provided food, talked about all the resources. And actually even connected, we'd learned by going there that they have their own after-school program. So the students get off the bus, they can walk in there, and as long as they're coming, they can actually get resource and help from that little community center within their complex. She also brought the people that provide a lot of those resources, the social worker, counselor intervention teacher, Boys and Girls Club, Family Resource Center, all those people are a part of this. So families were getting to see firsthand who they were. Their back-to-school night, they had different sessions, and they dedicated one of those sessions to attendance. So the whole school is getting this message. Going back to that personal touch. Going back to that personal touch. And then they really kind of beefed up their attendance process at their school. They really looked at their students on their chronic absenteeism list and started to really hold SARS as soon as possible. They started in early September, so families that were chronically absent, they got them into the office, they're meeting with them, like, this is why this is important, you know, you missed this much school last year, they had all that data with them, and it made a big difference. There were points this year that, you know, they were like 20%, you know, improvement. And then the end of the year, you know, there's still, it's amazing the amount of growth that they made. So, and then they also, they offered the temporary home study as well for those families that are missing three days or more. So, you know, that, I really think it goes back to that personal touch that they, that they were able to offer, that really impacted a lot of the growth that they have. Well, I'm sorry, I was on the wrong slide there. Okay, so what do I attribute to this, this improvement? Well, the one thing we did is we centralized running our letters. School sites used to be able to run them on their own. It was really harder to monitor. Sometimes they wouldn't do it because they were busy doing other things, and so we took that responsibility away. We ran it from my office, me, Lori, and myself, and every two weeks, we were sending letters. It was a little overwhelming in the beginning for, for the school sites, but it was a new process to us, too. So we, we didn't know what we didn't know at that point. And we began to really kind of listen, like, okay, so what is, what are some of the things that are hard? Who's navigating this better? And we shared all that information. And so the process got tighter. And the schools, what would happen is they would then have to approve or not approve the letters to be sent. We were, we also added a chronic absenteeism letter. We always ran truancy letters, but then we also added a chronic absenteeism letter. So 10% of the school year at that point, if you missed 10% or more, you received a letter. And then we also added in there, students who were not chronically absent at this point at this year missed, on average, this amount of days. So 4.2 days, 5.4, whatever it was, and it kind of, so it gave them a kind of a point of reference as well. I will say that there were some parents that weren't really happy about getting these letters because they're like, hey, I told you we were leaving. So it provided opportunity to kind of educate them, you know, if you go on vacation, that's really an unexcused absence. But, but also, you know, you're missing a lot of school, but, you know, we're just letting you know. So it provided some learning, and I, and I think that trickle-down really made a difference. So I apologize to the parents that, that are really good at communicating it, but just, you know, it's really important that they're there, and we saw tonight why. We also introduced a new tool with Dr. Booth's help called the Tableau, and it provides us real-time data about students and their absence rate. And so we're taking that to a next step. Next year, we're going to continue to do that for all the sites, but we're also going to monitor the SARS students and the school sites will get to monitor their SARS, the students that are on that, getting that, on that SARS review. So we're going to keep that going and really provide a little bit more data for them to, to reflect, like, okay, how are we doing with certain students? And then we also, with the temporary home study implementation, we provided some process for them, a data tool tracker, and we have schools last year prior year that they would send all this information out, and they would get no ADA back. Well, now, they didn't really have a good system of tracking it, so we provided that for everybody. And now they're tracking it. We're seeing schools that never got ADA, they're getting ADA. So that really has made a big difference as well. All right, so goals for next year. So our schools that finish the year 19%, 19% or lower, our goal for them next year is to be at a chronic absenteeism rate of 10% or lower. The schools that are 20% or higher, we want them to focus on trying to get to 15% or lower, and our overall district goal will be 12%. So 12%, 12.1% was what our rate was pre-pandemic. So we're, that's like, and it feels a little ambitious, but I am so encouraged by what we have this year, I really believe that we can get to that point where we can, you know, see, see that kind of gain again. So I'm really, I'm hoping that, you know, we're going to try real hard, we're going to keep refining our practice, and then we'll, you know, if we could get to those, those numbers, I, you know, my other goal is to make Rob as happy as possible and improve our, our ADA rate. So that's it for me. So any, any questions?
It sounds like part of the protocol that was really efficacious was having the office site involved in making phone calls. Do you, do we have the ability to make that part of a protocol? Do parent volunteers do that? It seems to me that, you know, all this process is great, and letters are great, not everybody responds well to snail mail or answers it consistently, and it seems that the outreach had almost immediate impact. As you gathered this data, and you said you gathered data, you gave school sites suggestions of systems that would, would work. Do we have, I don't know how the, all the office staff, how it all works, but do we have the capability then to create outreach as part of a protocol to improve so that, you know, we're shooting for 12, that 12 could become 10, could become eight, could become five?
Yeah. The secondary schools, it's a lot, bigger challenge. They, you know, they have a full-time person, you know, they're, they're receiving, you know, in one day, there can be anywhere from like 300 Parent Square messages that they got to go through that. So it's a little bit more of a challenge for them. The elementary schools, it just depends, because they all have a different amount of time for an attendance person. So like, just taking Pueblo Vista as an example, Kathleen is there doing attendance for, I believe, like, three hours, but then she also does an additional three or four working in the library. So it allows her a little time to make those calls, but then also Sonia, their office manager, kind of picks that up and helps as well. So I'm going to try and replicate that as much as I can, and...
It has such direct performance for ADA, and it seems like if the ability is to refine that because the impact is large.
Mm-hmm.
It seems like that would be something we should strategize at the site level because the impact has academic impact, ADA impact.
The other thing, the letters that we send out through the attendance process don't go through Parent Square. They're direct emails to the parents, so...
So you do it through email, that's...
Correct. Well, and we did do some through SMS, and part of that with the chronic absenteeism letters, we did that through the snail mail because there was some research from Harvard around the, that it has a stronger impact than, than getting something, an email, those kind of things. So we, we kind of picked a lane, we said chronic absenteeism will reach more students that way, and they were, and part of the data was even if there's a sibling in the house and they didn't get a letter, their attendance tend to improve, too, so...
Congratulations.
So...
Clearly, the focus is more statistical, these, these, it's large and well-expected.
Thank you.
Any other? Wesley Ryzer.
Congratulations, and thank you for your dedication in taking this on. I just wanted to say, to thank you because the, the message that you send with that, with the commitment to getting kids in school who are missing school is incredibly powerful. You were saying to those kids and to their families that they matter, that we notice when they're not there, that their presence is important to us. And so the impact on that, I think, goes beyond whether, whether their improvement goes up a little bit or a lot in terms of attendance, just that as an organization and as the individuals behind that, I just think that that's incredibly important. And to just highlight, Trustee Jankowicz's comment, the ADA implications, the budgetary implications are not insignificant here as well. So in these, you know, really difficult, tight-budget economic times, this has just a double, a double benefit. And as you said, the kids cannot learn and cannot show growth if they are not in school having instruction. So taking this on and then having that sort of mitigating temporary solution of the at-home temporary study is also just a way to reach those kids who are not able to for legitimate reasons, or who are not able to because of circumstantial reasons that are preventing them from being in school. It at least gives something and doubles down on that message that, hey, if you're not making it to school, we still care about your learning, and we're going to do our best to support you. So every prong of this approach is, is really heartening and, I think, speaks to our values as an organization, and I want to commend you on your commitment and your hard work and your great results.
Thank you.
And, Trustee Gracia.
Yeah, it's impressive that we've been able to get across-the-board reductions in our chronic absenteeism, and some schools have even hit double-digit reductions of their chronic absenteeism rate. One was almost 20%, which is really amazing. Hopefully, we can keep this momentum going into next year. It was mentioned that your goal for next year was an ambitious goal, and I appreciate that we are setting an ambitious goal. I support the district setting lofty goals that are shooting for excellence. I love the idea that we will stretch for a challenging result, thereby effectively pushing the system forward. I did have a question. I was wondering if we had considered having our strongest-performing schools share some strategies with some that are still struggling a little bit?
Yeah, so I'm learning from everybody, and, and so, as an example, we are, we have our community schools grant, and we have those, those community schools, and so a lot of that information, I'm passing along to them as well about that, because they do have a little more resources, they can add that personal touch. We're also trying to, working with Viviana Lorera and Roxanna Plancardi, they have a lot of work with those community schools, so they're, they're actually, information sessions that they're going to have for parents are not just going to be offered just for that school, it's going to be offered for all schools, you know, so as we help parents try to navigate our system. I, you know, so yes, we are learning. About mid-year, I did hold like a meeting with the attendance specialists from the secondary schools and the elementary schools to learn, the ones that were performing, and learn their best practices. And, and that's kind of how we were able to kind of refine what we were doing, and we'll continue to do that. So, yeah, the ones that are working, we're definitely going to try to ride on, ride their wave and hopefully help the other sites.
Thank you.
Good question, Trustee Gracia, anyone else? Anyone else? We're fine, you know, the good, the good news is killing me. I, you know, I'm loving this, it's a great night, I have to, this is why you got a superior evaluation, we knew this was coming. And, and what I have to do is, actually, we managed to skip public comment again. So do we have any comments from people out there in Zoom land?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, thank you, and we can, let's take a break. Okay, how, how long? Five minutes, five minutes.
Practices and strategies are held in common and what are the tensions and unique perspectives? And so that was the work that we tried to do. At the district level, and let me just say that some of the themes that popped up, which are directly in alignment with the number one on the strategic plan, the 15 different goals, the very first one was rigorous and relevant instruction, which was exactly what we were sort of listening for and listening for during the presentations and different interviews. The students called out that as a number one priority, more hands-on, more relevance, more field experiences. And again, we were talking with high school students, but even as I looked at your attendance report and Pueblo was your, one of your stars in that, and I realized, and as I looked up really quickly because I wasn't familiar with that elementary school, they're doing a hands-on project-based learning work. And that I'm sure contributes to the excitement about the school, not only the attendance follow-up, but getting kids in school, making it fun and relevant. Our work is based on a district framework, and that framework resulted from working in 14 different, or over 14 years in nine different school districts. And we came up with five kind of domains, and each of those domains, the number one is the leadership commitment and accountability and setting forth many of the things that you have called out in your strategic plan. You know, defining your success indicators and making sure that there's a common vision that's held, equity access and choice being number two, and that's a top priority I can see in your plan. High-quality learning and teaching, the lining of the frameworks, the sustained partnerships, and then the operational alignment that goes with that are critical. And so as we think about the actions, we actually aligned most of our work around that. Now, there's a lot of work that's happened over this year, and even though we did this work back in January, you were pretty quick and good students to pick up and do a district college and career readiness leadership team. And that leadership team went to work pretty quickly in February, and we began to think about both site visits to build more vision for this. And so the district participated in a couple of site visits here in California, one down to the Central Valley to visit some ag, advanced ag, emerging ag tech programs, as well as Porterville Unified School District, which has been one of our flagship demonstrations for this approach of college and career readiness. Along with that is that formation of a leadership team. And then we did some additional visits. After the October report that you read, we were actually able to get out into the facilities and really assess some of the equipment and facilities needs so that you have some information that you can use for future bonds or other work as necessary. Let me just highlight specifically the district leadership team and their schedule. Again, as Lisa said, we kicked off with a review and an overview of the work, but then set forward what were those starting points and development points for this work, and then a self-assessment around those five domains in the district framework, and then began to prioritize those and determined a set of specific actions necessary, and these include these six domains. And number one is to define what a pathway means, make sure that we have a set of priorities and in alignment with our strategic plan, which I think is very evident. We know that master schedule is going to be a challenge point, so that was one of the things that the leadership team called out right away. We need to make sure that we solve that problem and come up with some creative solutions. Leveraging financial resources. And I know your operations assistant superintendent, Rob, is going to be very much a student of that, and he's on that committee and leading that group, looking at the equity aspects and really thinking about what's the middle school activities that we can do to lead up to the high school. And then the business, the student support service is necessary, and the industry partner coordination that's going to be so necessary to bring the relevance and the real-world application in, bringing your business partners in. And I believe that your community is staged and ready for that quite well. We have launched an action planning process, which is very similar to the work that with, you know, strategy owners and whatnot. So we're very consistent in this, and Lisa is actually doing a crosswalk between all the work that's happening in the different committees and the work that we're doing as a college and career pathway. As far as some next steps, and I won't go into depth on each of these, but that number one action item that came out of our review, which is consistent with what the district leadership team came up with, is defining what a pathway means. And it's not just a career pathway. It's not just a series of CTE courses. You have a fairly small percentage of students participating in that now. What we would suggest is that all students have an opportunity to get both college and career, and how do we connect the two is the secret sauce. And I believe it's a secret sauce to improving attendance and student achievement at the high school level for sure. We've seen that happen. Number two is really defining, and a lot of the discussion today has been about the frameworks in the district, getting aligned around those and having some quality frameworks to do the work. So number two is really about that, and number three is really to do some crosswalking between all the different initiatives the district is underway with and see where we can align and make sure that they're consistent with this work. We applaud the effort of the district leadership team and appreciate that to continue, and I think we have a great plan to do so, which will lead to a multi-year plan, which should be in alignment with your strategic plan. One of the strategies that you all have picked up on is really building out a system for work-based learning, and so establishing what has been coined the E3 collaborative, but the economic employment and education collaborative to really help build out a system of support so that we can mobilize the community and engage our students in meaningful work outside of the classroom walls. As one superintendent said to me, he said, "Rob, the classroom of the future may not be a classroom at all." And I think that's very true. And I think as we think about this, maybe we could do that. And just to wrap up here on the recommendations, we'd love for you to take advantage of opportunities to learn more about by participating and visiting. We have four experiential site visits coming up this year, and there's already plans in place to take teams of folks out to see different schools that are in the middle of implementation or have completed the implementation and have, we can learn from their mistakes and avoid their potholes and whatnot. So, and then as you approved back in October, this transition from the county to the district with your current technical programs, we applaud your effort to continue to work towards that transition and to integrate that program because it really is, it will be the through line, it will be the consistent arrow for which we can align the pathways, the college and career pathways around. So I'll stop there and take any questions or turn it back to monitor.
Okay, I think I need to do public comments. Do we have any, anyone in, on Zoom wanting to comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All right, now, colleagues.
So I've been very privileged to see the inner workings of this work as part of the leadership team. I can't remember what the acronym was.
CCR.
CCR, whatever it is. And it's just very impressive, the level and breadth and depth that we go through to discuss all the different components that led up to this work that you're presenting. So I really appreciate that effort. And the amount of work I know that goes on in the background that I don't see when I just come in for the committee meetings is tremendous because when we get in there, we get a little debrief and we're off and running. So thank you very much for that work.
Trustee Reiser.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm so excited about this and feeling that it's so affirming how aligned all of our presentations are tonight, that we're really like everyone's rowing in the same direction. And the alignment with our strategic vision and strategic plan, it just, it makes so much sense. And I just wanted to dovetail on your comment about maybe the classroom of the future isn't a classroom at all. And I think that what we are doing is taking what has been a 20th century model of college and career readiness that we has been kind of limping along and that we've been sort of pretending still works. And I want to applaud the district for sort of saying, "This is not working at all, and it is time for a major overhaul," you know, in service to our students, to prepare them to go out into the real world and be able to support themselves. And so I just am thankful that we are continuing to build. You know, we do have a little bit of momentum in our workplace learning, you know, the summer internship program that continues to grow is a wonderful example of that. And just keep up the good work. I'm very excited for the district to have ownership of this entire program so that we can keep it in alignment with our own organization's vision and values. So thank you so much for your partnership.
Well said. Trustee Gracia.
Yep, I just wanted to mostly echo what trustee Reiser had just said and sort of laud the district for finally taking the career part of career readiness as seriously as it seems like the college part has been taken because I felt like that's been something that's been a little bit missing over the years. So I'm excited for this initiative.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Does not want to work. I cannot say it better than trustee Reiser did, so I will just say did-ill.
Well, again, all this good news, you know, I'm thrilled.
President Water, I just, I want to make a connection. It's really good news. I think it was reported at the last board meeting, but I also just want to also commend Dr. Ready, Lisa Faith, the partnership with Connect, Connect had really supported us. We did also, we're recipients of, we're one of the recipients in the state of the Golden State Pathways Grant, which is giving the district $3.6 million to launch this work, which is really extraordinary. So it's amazing to have a plan, to have all the right decisions in place, and to have the resources to do this work well. So it's just extraordinary.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And now we're moving on to K action items, and there are a lot of them. So we are going to start off with three resolutions that will require a roll call vote. General Services, 1A Resolutions 24-23 through 24-26, Signature Authorization/Register of Official Signatures of Governing Board Members.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a motion from trustee Gracia and a second from trustee Chu. And are there any public comments on this?
There are no public comments on this item.
Okay, great. We need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And K1B, Resolution 24-29, adoption of resolution calling for election.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Chu. Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And four seats are up, hands up, who's running for reelection? Thank you. K1C, Resolution 24-31, Resolution of the Board of Education of the Napa Valley Unified School District, ordering an election to authorize the issuance of school bonds with respect to Napa Valley Unified School District, School Facilities Improvement District Number One, Napa area, establishing specifications of the election order and requesting consolidation with other elections occurring on November 5, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
President Water, before we take it to a vote, I do have our consultant, Mr. Jeremy Hauser from Team Civics here, who's just going to quickly orient the board to the item.
Can you all hear or see me?
We can hear you and we see your photograph.
We'll take it. Well, thank you, Dr. Mercedi. Thank you, President Water and members of the board for having me again, second time this week. The resolution before you, if adopted, would officially place a $230 million bond measure on the ballot this November, specifically in the School District Number One in the Napa area. This resolution is the result of nearly a year's worth of work in planning and preparation to get to where we are tonight. That's included extensive stakeholder engagement and outreach. It's included two separate voter opinion polls to gauge voter attitudes, tax sensitivities, and understand their priorities for funding. And it's included a series of meetings with district staff, financial experts, bond council and facilities experts to pull together a plan that we think adequately aligns the needs of your district with the priorities of your voters. We're recommending that you move forward with this resolution and officially placing a measure on the ballot this fall for a few different reasons. First and foremost, your polling in each of the two polls we conducted hovers right at that 55% threshold and actually goes above it when positive information and more details about the measure are provided. I think we all know that reaching that 55% threshold in Napa is a tall order, but it's one that we think is absolutely feasible, and we think that this November is really your best shot at doing it, given we're going to be seeing the high watermark in voter turnout. And in those higher turnout elections, we tend to see younger and more progressive and tax-friendly voters cast ballots. And then finally, we have the knowledge that there is an independent group of parents who are at the ready and willing to step up and run the independent advocacy effort needed to get this measure over the finish line. As I'm sure you all remember, the district cannot be involved in advocating for or against the passage of this measure, and so an independent group will need to be formed in order to do the grassroots organizing, fundraising, and stakeholder engagement needed to reach that 55% threshold. And we're confident that the group that has raised their hands and said they're willing to take this on is the right group for the job. Now, some specifics about the resolution you're about to adopt. It includes a few key details that your voters will see this fall. First and foremost is that 75-word ballot question that's going to be printed directly on the ballot mailed to each voter in your community, and that we know each voter who casts a ballot will read before casting their vote. Also included in the resolution is a detailed project list that outlines the use of funds should the measure be approved in a more detailed and specific way. There's also explanations of the accountability provisions built into the measure, including annual audits and an independent citizens oversight committee. And then finally, there is a detailed tax rate statement that explains the underlying taxes needed to generate that $230 million bonding capacity that we're recommending put in on the ballot. This resolution was completed in coordination with your district bond council, Courtney Jones of Jones Hall. She's also with me here tonight, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have about the resolution, about the process that got us to where we are tonight, or the next steps to follow.
Do we have any questions? I don't think we do. I don't think we do. So thank you so much for all your work, all your preparation. Thank you very much for just all the information you've given us, and thanks very much for your optimistic attitude. I appreciate that very much. And we've got a first and a second, and I think I need to go for public comments. Is there anyone listening in who has a comment on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I have a first, a motion from trustee Gracia, and a second from trustee Chu, and we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we are on K16, Adoption of Revised Napa Valley Unified School District Governance Handbook.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from trustee Gracia, a second from trustee Chu. Do we have anyone in, listening in who wants to comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, so we need a roll call vote. No, we don't?
This is a.
Oh, I'm sorry. This one wasn't highlighted. This was a regular, I'm sorry, it's hard to tell with yellow highlight on yellow paper. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and so it passes unanimously. And I would like to say something. I would like to thank trustee Reiser and trustee Jankowitz for all your work on this, for the revisions in perfecting our governance handbook. Thank you so much.
We're submitting it as evidence for the Golden Gavel. CSBA's Golden Gavel.
You'll get to be able to, you know, take a little gavel home with you. All right, so E, Approval of the NVUSD Strategic Vision, Vision 2040, Reimagining Our Future Together, and.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Okay, it's, it is a motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Chu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. F, Adoption of NVUSD's 2024-2029 Strategic Plan, Transforming Our Future Together.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have a public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Gracia, and we have a second by trustee Chu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, it passes unanimously. G, Nomination of Three NVUSD Programs for the CSBA Golden Bell Award.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
No public comments. First, we have a motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Chu. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would like to point out that they are excellent wellness programs, are, you know, very, very, you know, au courant of the moment. Actually, talk about, it was almost, it was very much, we were in advance. We were in the advance guard of this one. Our NASH, our Wonderful Healthy Meal Program, and, you know, TK12, yeah, Pathway, and thank you for that. All right, Business Services, these are, these three will require a roll call votes. A, Resolution 24-27, Budget Reserves.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, do, a motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
We need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have B, 2B is Resolution 24-28, Interfund Borrowing.
Move to approve.
A second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. And all, whoops, we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. 2C, Resolution 2430, Self-Certifying Increased Federal Micro-Purchase Threshold.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, first by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. We need a roll call vote.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. 2D, Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, and LCAP Federal Addendum.
Move to approve, but I'd like some discussion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Chu, and he wants to discuss it.
Yes, I do. All right.
You can do it now.
Okay. I believe our goals do not push the district sufficiently in the realm of student achievement, and as such, I will not support this watered-down LCAP. I want us to set high standards for ourselves and strive to meet them, not set minor incremental goals that don't push the district to achieve greatness.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay, do we have any public comments on this?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, trustee Reiser has a comment.
I'd just like to say that I trust the expertise of the Instructional Services Division to set appropriate growth goals for our students.
Thank you. All right, so we've got a motion, we've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Nope. Okay, so it carries 5-1. All righty. 2E, Adoption of 24-25 Budget.
Move to approve.
A second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so it's unanimous. Public Address System, F, Public Address System Replacement at American Canyon High School with AMS.net.
Move to approve.
A second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. G, Public Address System Replacement at Canyon Oaks Elementary School with AMS.net.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, now we're on Section 3, Human Resources. Proposed CSEA/NVUSD Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay, 3B, Amendment to Employee Agreement for Dana Page, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. C, Amendment to Employee Agreement for Dr. Monica J. Ready, Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, it's unanimous. 3D, Amendment to Employee Agreement for Rabender Monk, I'm sorry, Monk, hold on, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So it carries unanimously. For Instructional Services, A, 24-25, School Plans for Student Achievement, SPSA for Elementary, Middle. A, 24-25 School Plans for Student Achievement, SPSA for Elementary, Middle, and High Schools.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So, it's unanimous. 4B Adoption of College and Career Pathways Needs and Capacity Assessment Report.
Move to approve, but I'd like some discussion.
A second.
Okay. Fine. How about, let's have some discussion.
Okay, great. I think it's important to understand that college is a subset of career readiness. I believe that Mark Perna has it right. If we continue to talk about college and career readiness, then college continues to be the only thing that matters, and career readiness gets short shrift. College is really just a pathway to a different set of career goals. Therefore, if we want our students to be career-ready, that already includes the college path. I understand we can't rename the state's indicator, but internally, I encourage us to think of things as being career-ready, as college is just a way to access a small set, a subset of careers.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia. Well said. Anyone else have a comment? Okay. And do we have public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. I mean, opposed? Nope. It's unanimous. Okay. C, American Outdoor Education for Northwood.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A trustee, but, excuse me, a motion by Trustee Gracia and a second by Trustee Chu. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. It passes unanimously. D, BSN Sports and Varsity Brands Impact Program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. Do we have any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. It's unanimous. E, Core Online Curriculum and Supplementary Instructional Material Adoptions for High School.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. F, Core World Language Instructional Material Adoption for Middle School.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's a motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. G, Marin County Office of Education, Walker Creek Ranch Camp.
Move to approve.
A second.
Motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. H, Napa Valley Education Foundation Wellness Training.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. A, Recycle of Obsolete English Language Arts, English Language Development, and Health Instructional Material Surpluses.
Move to approve.
Second.
But, a motion by Trustee Gracia and a second by Trustee Chu. Any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. J, Agreement with Napa Valley Care Center.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. Are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Five.
President Water, I'm so sorry to stop you. You have an incredible rhythm going here.
What have I skipped?
You didn't skip anything. Before we leave the Instructional Services section, I think both Dr. Reddy and I were a little thrown off because the LCAP is under Business Services. And I understand...
That was weird.
Yeah. And that's part of the process, because it goes with the budget. But, we just, we understand that the board voted, and that's fine. But, we do just want to read into the record. It's in the document, but we just wanted to make explicit some of the revisions that were made between the public hearing and the adoption that just occurred tonight, just for it to technically be on the public record. So, I'm going to invite Dr. Reddy before we go into the next Operational Services segment of the agenda, if you could just take a quick moment to let the public know, read into the record, and just make explicit to the school board the revisions that were made.
Thank you, Dr. Mercedi. The LCAP document up for approval this evening, or that was approved earlier this evening, has several revisions based on feedback from stakeholders and the Napa County Office of Education staff. The most significant revision was the addition of a goal to address Valley Oaks' status as an equity multiplier school. Valley Oak receives additional funds as a result of this status, which needed to be noted in our LCAP. We have also identified school sites, student groups, and indicator categories from the California dashboard at the lowest level, and aligned an LCAP action to accelerate progress for that school, student group, or indicator. We have provided additional information in the LCAP annual update to clarify the effectiveness of actions from the previous plan.
Thank you for the clarification. That's great. All right. Five. Operational Services. A, Agreement with Ellis Flooring.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu. And are there any public comments?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?